All right, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1422. Today is October 2nd. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, item number one on the agenda is the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams, President Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, all council members are present and accounted for. Item number two is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or corrections to be made? All right, hearing none. We can go on to item number three, which is presentations. And we, looks like we have a few presentations tonight. We have a few oath of offices happening today. And if our wonderful Police Chief, Chief Arnz, wants to come up and say a few words before we get started with the swearing in.
We are fortunate tonight to bring two new police officers before City Council for introduction. They have just graduated from the Scarlet Oaks Police Academy after several, several months of basic training. And I would like to introduce them tonight. And I will read their biographies, or, yeah, I think that's correct, right? And then I'll ask them to come forward with the mayor to be sworn in. And then someone from their family will actually do the pinning of their badge as we normally do. The first officer I'd like to introduce is Officer David Stone Rock. David grew up in the Indianapolis area, and upon graduating high school, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. David was deployed twice overseas with the 2nd Battalion, 1st Marine Division, 1st Marine Regiment. Corporal Stone Rock ended his active duty assignment in 2018. Still desiring to serve, he joined the Indiana National Guard where he still serves as a sergeant and a scout sniper platoon. He has nine total years serving in our military. Prior to accepting an offer to work for the City of Forest Park, he worked for Eli Lilly Pharmaceuticals manufacturing IBD's medication. His parents, Brian and Diane Rinallet, have joined him tonight, and he will have the honor of having his mother pin his badge. Our second officer is Officer Wade Burning. Wade grew up in the Ross, Ohio, area. Upon graduating high school, he attended the University of Cincinnati where he obtained his Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice. His law enforcement career began with the Butler County Sheriff's Office where he served as a corrections officer, and later as a probation officer with the Butler County Court of Common Pleas. While assigned as probation officer, he also served on the Butler County undercover regional narcotics task force. He has also served as a community service supervisor with a fair few municipal court. He is a certified Ohio Basic Peace Officer Instructor in multiple disciplines, and serves as a Basic Peace Officer Academy Instructor at Butler Tech Police Academy. He is married with a daughter. He has joined the night by a plethora of family and friends. And his, if I understand it correctly, his dad and Marilyn are going to be watching this live stream from the hospital. His sister Gina will have the privilege of pinning his badge. And I just want to publicly thank council for your support in our hiring efforts for police officers. This is a unique time in law enforcement, I think in firefighting as well, in trying to obtain qualified individuals that not only want to serve, but have the qualifications to serve. And I applaud the efforts of our council. I applaud the efforts of our Civil Service Commission and our HR Director. And none of this could be done without my captain, Captain Jones, who has really taken the effort to lead not only our recruiting efforts, but all aspects of our hiring process. And I hope that by the end of the year, I can bring you several more candidates before this council to have some badges pinned on so we can get back to full compliment at the Police Department. So with no further comments, I would ask Officer Burning and Officer Stone Rock to step in front of the podium and join the mayor.
(Inaudible)
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 Mayor, I don't know if you would like to have both of the newly hired officers, if you would like to give them the opportunity to make a comment?
If you would like to come up and say a few words. (Laughter)
You're appreciated. We're honored to serve you guys, and we look forward to being here for a very long time. Thank you all for being here today. (Applause)
Officer Stone Rock was the class speaker for his graduating academy class. You can tell he has that ambition to step right up. What he forgot to mention was how much he appreciates his new chief, right? He'll learn that over time.
Well, I do want to start by saying I appreciate both of you for signing up to do this. It's not an easy job. I appreciate the sacrifice that you are making. I appreciate the sacrifice from each of your families for what you are doing. But you have joined the finest police force in southwest Ohio for the City of Forest Park. So thanks, Chief. I would also like to thank you and Captain Jones for your leadership in recruiting quality candidates. Just listening to their resumes, I'm like, this is top quality right here in Forest Park. And that's what we like to see you. We're really thankful to each of you. And I tell this to every officer, the car that I drive, when you see it, please just like, let me give him a pass this time. If you catch me speeding, I'm always driving a Chevrolet Cruze. But thank you both for your service. Any other council members like to speak?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
I'd like to say thank you for joining the City of Forest Park. And I have to disagree with the mayor that we have the best police force in southwest Ohio. I think we have the best police force in Ohio, not just southwest.
I ain't been nowhere else.
Oh, congratulations, and thanks for accepting the task of serving our community. Second largest city in Hamilton County. So thanks a lot, and I hope to see you around, but not behind me with the red lights.
I just wanted to say thank you for choosing the City of Forest Park. Welcome to our family, and we hope you have many years of service to our community, so thank you for choosing us. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the family for supporting their cause and for being supportive of their decision to be police officers. I'd like to recite this quote quickly. "My heroes are those who risk their lives every day to protect our world and make it a better place." That's our police officers, our firefighters, and members of our armed forces. As you go out into the community, know that you are a symbol of hope for the hopeless. You are a symbol of strength for the weak. You are going to go into some situations where you're going to have to make some quick decisions. Looking at the both of you, if I could judge a book by its cover, I would say that you are good. And we are very happy to have good here in our city and to represent. We thank you so much for the job that you're going to do. We thank you for the things that you've done that have gotten you to this place. You are welcomed in the City of Forest Park, and you are welcomed in the Police Department. And thank you again to you and to your families for choosing us.
I'll be brief. How am I fault with that? Right? I like to welcome you both to our city. You know, when I heard your bios, it just brought joy to my heart because I'm a loyal Bearcat. And just like Dr. Moore, I'm a veteran too. So one day if I see you on patrol, I have to stop and talk about where we're at in the United States military. So once again, thank you for choosing Forest Park. You find that it's a great diverse community, and we stand behind you. We stand behind you. So just when you go on your patrols, just know that, okay? So we have your back.
We do. We support our officers here.
We do. Just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, we really do appreciate you. And we're not, it's not a joke when we think that we are actually the best. It's real. So when you are averting your eyes, you got to look, and you have to nod, and you have to agree. We really, really have some excellent trained professional, high-level professionally trained officers that do a great job in this community. We are very close knit. You're going to encounter a lot of our, as they call them, youngsters. Go easy on them. They're having a hard time in today's world. And just remember that, you know, you are still, you know, playing a major role in, you know, in how they view the world as well, and making sure that they can, we want them to be future officers as well. So whatever the community, the community has, it's always open up, open for you. And please bring your families, engage, because that's exactly what we want. You are an extension of our family now. So thank you, and God bless each and every one of you and your families.
Well, not to add anything different, but just to echo on what has been said from our other council members here. We truly want to thank each of you for stepping up and being the men that you are, taking on the high-level responsibility to deliver service to this City of Forest Park. We know you'll be challenged with the reality of life, but I'm sure and know that you'll be led and guided by what you've received in your learning, your training, and what you receive from Chief. And just in life in general, I see each of you as faces of a respectable man. And we are honored to have you here as an officer to serve for the Forest Park. So we thank you, and as we should for all. Pray God's blessing, not only for just you two, but for all of our armed forces, not just here in Forest Park, but throughout this city and throughout our nation. So we truly thank you and look forward to meeting with you and speaking with you. And as mayor might say, I drive a 1948 Ranger. In disguise. So you look at that and you say, man, let this guy just go on, because he ain't speeding anyway.
Oh, I'm gonna be speeding. I'm just gonna freak out.
Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
And I'd just like to add, we hired, or I was involved in all the interviews, and it's, you know, Forest Park, we don't just hire anybody. We look for the best of the best. And we got affirmation of this throughout the academy that we had two of the top candidates in the academy. So for that, I'm very proud, and congratulations.
Your Honor, if I may request the council to excuse the officers and their families from the rest of the council meeting?
Yeah.
No, I think everybody should stay. No. Yeah, this is the part that's going to get a little bit boring, so we will not be offended if you like to cut out at this moment. But thank you, and, you know, God bless.
If they not want to take any family pictures?
Yeah, actually, if you want to take photos in front of the dais as well, you can do that.
In front of the...
Well, we don't want to interrupt your council.
Ain't got much. This time, if you want to get some photos in.
I mean, this is the last agency you're going to work with. So get the picture.
Why don't you and your family stand in front of the... And Officer Crowley will take your picture. Or in front of the flag.
In front of the, yeah, that's nicer. You want us to move the flag? In front of the...
They'll take some good ones because they may end up on a newsletter or two. Yeah, actually, make sure it's in a newsletter. Okay.
(Inaudible)
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
See you back here in two weeks.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, we have another presentation, which will be a city proclamation for the Cincinnati Chapter of the NPHC. Councilmember Harrison, actually, did you want to read that proclamation?
You know, you have such a distinguished voice. I wouldn't mind if you did it. I mean, because you are the mayor, right? But however you want to do it.
Yeah, I'm sure you can read it.
Okay. So, we have some VIPs in the house. Everybody's a VIP, but we have some, these individuals have distinct blazers on today. So I'd like to thank the representatives of the Cincinnati NPHC, the National Panathletic Council. And this is a proclamation. Whereas on August 13th, the Cincinnati Chapter of the National Panathletic Council, NPHC, held their annual picnic for the first time in the City of Forest Park. Whereas the NPHC has faithfully and fraternally served the community of Forest Park, as most of its members reside locally and take pride in participating in area activities and projects. And whereas the organizations that are part of the NPHC, Alpha Phi Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha, Kappa Alpha Psi, Omega Psi Phi, Delta Sigma Theta, Phi Beta Sigma, Zeta Phi Beta, Sigma Gamma Row, and Iota Phi Theta, provide scholarships every year to graduating high school students and students of higher learning to further their educations. And as a supporter of the Winton Wood School District and other charitable organizations in the City of Forest Park area. And whereas the City of Forest Park wishes you continuous growth with opportunities for learning, sharing, and friendship. Now therefore be hereby proclaimed, but it's your name, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, me, Aaron Brown.
Proclaimed by the power invested in him as the mayor of the City of Forest Park that October 2nd, 2023 is designated as National Panathletic Council Day in the City of Forest Park, and urge all citizens to welcome the Cincinnati Chapter of the NPHC's and its members to our community. Reclaimed and signed on this second day of October, 2023. Representatives like to come forth.
There you go.
I'd like to present you with this proclamation. I want to thank you all for your continued service. It was a wonderful event because I did get to attend. But I want to say how much I appreciate all of you dedicating not only your lives and your organizations to service, but being representatives of leaders to, you know, young black children in our community and everybody in the community specifically. So thank you, and hopefully we can do it again next year.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
Yeah, if you want to speak, you can come up to the podium. And we'll be back.
So we just want to thank you all for the invite. We really did enjoy ourselves in August. And I know this proclamation says the Cincinnati NPHC, but we're the Greater Cincinnati. So as Mayor Brown told us in August, that Forest Park is the second largest municipality in Hamilton County. So we're here to serve Hamilton County. So we probably need to work on a name change, but we just want to thank you all. And I saw that you all had a motion for a multicultural event in November. So when that motion passes, hopefully we get an invite to that, and we look forward to working with you all. And we really did appreciate you all allowing us to come to your city and use your facilities. And we want to thank Brother Harrison and Sister Moore. They're both members of our councils and our respective organizations. So we thank you so much.
(Inaudible)
Okay.
Make sure we can see those flags. We may have to all.
I know.
Thank you.
She's trying to hide it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, take a look.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
All right, and that was the last presentation there. So that concludes item number three on the agenda. The next item is item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped-recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So please, if anyone would like to speak, please take up the podium. There should be a sign-in sheet up there as well. And then you can sign your name, and then you can address council.
God bless you all. My name is Pastor Gail Davis, and we just moved into the City of Forest Park, so we wanted to come and introduce ourselves. We're at 1253 Kemper Meadows, Suite 300. It's called the Embassy. We're really excited to be here, and we wanted to make sure that we got a chance to say hello and let you know that we want to be involved in the community to be a community support.
What's the name of the church?
Thank you for that.
What's the name of the church and address again?
The church is called The Embassy, and the address is 1253 Kemper Meadows, Suite 300. And it's Gail Davis.
Esther Davis.
What time is the service?
12:30.
Oh, even better. Thank you, Lord. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Pastor.
Welcome, Pastor Davis.
You know, we appreciate that. That is actually a rarity. I think it may be the first time I was going, do you recall a new church coming and introducing themselves and saying, we want to help?
Red Door.
Oh, Red Door. Yeah, so, top three, yes, in six years. So thank you.
All right, at this point, we're going to move on to item number five, which is reports with standing committees. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. I have a couple of things. First, I want to give a huge congratulations and shout-out to our counselor, Ms. Chelsea Clark. She was awarded by the Gaskins Foundation the STEM Entrepreneur Award. It is an annual award that they do once a year. So she got excellence in STEM and education and business. And so just a huge shout-out and congratulations to her. As you know, she has her own STEM business and is doing extremely well. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go. But congratulations, Councilwoman Clark, for that. Also, a couple of other things, just really, really quick. We are excited about the October 7th Harvest Fest. The Beautification Commission will be there. We are setting up a table. Very excited to be doing that. In addition to, a few months ago, there was a parent, Forest Park resident parent, who had a child with special needs. Her main issue and concern at that time was that there are no activities for her child to participate in. So we are very happy to be partnering with some community organizations. Our tribe, Hamilton County Department of Developmental Disabilities, and Forest Park's very own Dr., or NP, Kelly Haslin, are going to be partnering up to create a sensory area specifically for families with children who, specifically for families who have children, I'm sorry, with special needs, autism, and other developmental disabilities. So I'm very excited about that because we're going to have that. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you for that, council member. I don't have any work session items. Would you like to add any?
Yes, sir, I would. I'm still waiting for our full report on the marketing efforts to rebrand and elevate our amazing city. Would like to still get that, and so we can have some discussion about it as council. And then I would like to, again, I'm going to ask that we start some additional discussions on efforts to expand our commissions, committees, and boards to reflect our diverse city, wanting to find out collectively as a council, just have those conversations a little bit more thorough and flesh them out some more on what efforts we can put forth collectively to make our councils and boards and commissions and committees more diverse. And then also to, I want to have some discussion. I'd like to start an everyday citizen award that maybe we can offer once a month, just everyday citizens who are doing amazing things in Forest Park, helping an older woman across the street, or taking out someone's trash, or shoveling the snow for everyone on their, you know, on their street or whatever. I just want to start something like that. So I would like to have those discussions during work session, please.
Okay, thank you for that, council member. Moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I have to report from environmental awareness is that this past weekend's paper shredding and used tire went very well. And then for the work session, would like to, you know, Halloween's very quickly approaching. And over the years, maybe certain streets or something so that the kids aren't, so what's happening is the kids will walk from, they may, in a block of 10 houses, there may be only two houses. And, you know, that can just be a challenge when you've got multiple kids that you're bringing. So even if they were able to descend on maybe a section, and we amp that section up so that we can kind of, you know, even have neighbors coming to congregating or something like that, so that there's more candy for those kids to be able to get so they're not stretched out.
collectively to make our councils and boards and commissions and committees more diverse. And then also to, I want to, um, have some discussion. I like to start an everyday citizen award that maybe we can offer once a month, just everyday citizens who are doing amazing things in Forest Park, um, helping an older woman across the street or taking out someone's trash or shoveling the snow for everyone on their, you know, on their, on their street or whatever. I just want to start something like that. So, I would like to have those discussions during work session, please.
Okay. Thank you for that, council member. Moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, all I have to report from environmental awareness is that this past weekend's paper shredding and used tire went very well. And then for the work session, um, would like to, you know, Halloween's very quickly approaching and over the years maybe certain streets or something so that the kids aren't. So, what's happening is the kids will walk from, they may, in a block of ten houses, there may be only two houses. And, you know, that, that can just be a challenge when you've got multiple kids that you're bringing. So, even if they were able to descend on maybe a section and we amp that, that section up so that we can kind of, you know, even have neighbors coming to, um, congregating or something like that so that there's more, more candy for those kids to be able to get so they're not stretched out, um, so far. Just something to discuss things for.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any, um, work session items for you either. Would you like to add any?
Just that one.
Just that? Okay. All right. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, thank you to our two newest, uh, police officers who joined us in the City of Forest Park Police Department and also to our friends from the Greater Cincinnati NPHTC for, um, coming out this evening and joining us. Um, I have nothing, but once again, um, I know the last council meeting, I did bring up the issue of speeders up around the school. So, um, individuals speeding up and down Kenshire and, um, Kara Hill. And I did see the, um, the, um, the mobile traffic sign on Kara Hill. So, I want to thank, um, city engineer and the, and police department for getting after that. Um, I have nothing else, but once again, um, just to talk to our residents, once again, we see these kids walking the streets. Slow down, okay? There, we don't, you know, we want our kids to get to and from school safely and there's no need to go as fast as you do up and down these roads. And if it doesn't apply to you, I'm not talking to you. But if I'm talking to you, you know, we should do better, okay?
Thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Um, and do you have any other work session items to add?
Uh, not at this moment. Um, I know we'll be, um, you know, to our residents, if you're still interested in different committees or boards, um, please send an application in because we would like to get you involved, actively involved in the community. So, uh, just continue to do, do that. Um, but that's all I have. Nothing else for a work session.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
Um, I do not have a, a report tonight. I should have had one. I was supposed to, but I didn't get it together. But I don't have a report tonight. But one thing that I would like to add for our next work session, I would like to just continue the discussion about, um, the parking lot up here where the old Walmart used to be.
Oh, Walmart's parking. Okay. I will add that. So, we can bring it up on the, actually the tenth because next Monday will be a holiday. So, we'll have to do it on the Tuesday. All right. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Quality of Life met last Tuesday, September twenty-eighth. Um, we meet the fourth Tuesday each month at six thirty, um, here in the building in Room Three B. Um, and our next meeting is October the twenty-fourth, um, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty. So, the commission approved a Quality of Life community survey, um, to be disseminated to the residents and businesses. Um, this is a survey that is electronic version only and it takes about five minutes and is, um, designed to hear the voices of the community so we can, um, look, look to implement programs and activities, um, across, um, the lifespan. And so, the Quality of Life will launch, uh, launch their live, um, survey at the Harvest Fest, October the seventh. So, if you are attending the Harvest Fest, please come by the table and complete a survey. And also, we will be, um, sending it through our electronic newsletters, um, once, um, the next one comes out. So, you can also complete the survey during that platform. And also at the Harvest Fest, they will be, um, collecting emails. And so, one of the purpose of collecting the emails is to make sure that you're informed, um, and make sure you know what's going on in the community. And so, um, so we're very excited about that. Also, save the date. Um, we're still in the infancy stages, but we are planning a Veterans Day event, November eleventh. Um, so, um, if you know any veterans who've served, um, who currently serve, um, please make sure that, um, um, you contact us. Um, and, um, you can contact us through our more@forestpark.org and we'll make sure that you get a, um, invitation to the event. That completes my report.
All right. Thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Do you have any work session items to add?
Uh, yes. Um, I would like to discuss, um, senior services at our next work session.
Okay.
Um, also, if we can take a look at a high revised code one seven three, um, point twelve, um, it was effective date April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And if we can just get a better understanding of that ordinance and to, uh, better serve our seniors.
Okay. All right. And, um, moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I do not have a report to present.
Okay. And do you have any work session items to add?
Not to add.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Um, and that concludes item number five, which is reports for standing committees. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. Uh, I want to reiterate that the city is hosting our annual Harvest Fest this Saturday, October seventh. Uh, it will be from eleven AM to two PM. Um, and it's going to be up here at, um, the, in the fire department. So, that is one-two-zero-one West Kemper Road. Um, please come out. There will be, I believe, another chili competition. Um, kids are allowed to dress up. Uh, we'll have our fire department out. It's always, it's a really good time. Um, it's very fam, family-friendly event. Um, a member of the council will be in attendance and a lot of city commissioners will be in attendance as well. So, please bring your families out to our annual Harvest Fest this Saturday at eleven AM. Um, and that concludes my report. Um, and I do not have any work session items to add myself. So, we move on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report. And we have our assistant city manager, Mr. Andy Lewandowski.
Yes. Um, thank you, Mayor. We, just to reiterate, we had the paper shredding and the tire collection on this past Saturday. Um, both were, reached pretty much their max capacity. The tire collection filled the entire, um, semi-trailer. And then we had filled two semi-trailers, is what I was told, full of, um, for the shredding. They didn't shred on site. So, it was a huge success in that. Another, it has more for environmental tree delivery is next week for the residents who order trees. So, be on the lookout for that. Uh, and then we have, he also has tree removal assessments are, have been completed. So, nineteen residents have accepted. On the city cover, sixty percent of the cost of those who have, have accepted their assessment. Um, I believe it's anywhere from, some of the bigger trees are, or they cost upwards of fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars to tear down, so, um, for the dead trees. And then there's also some tree limb removals and stuff as part of that as well. And then to follow up on the trick or treat, just, I know we, and don't quote me on this, I think they're in the works. They possibly, they're talking about possibly doing a trunk or treat of something in Central Park. So, um, I know that's in the works. So, just to give you an update on that. Um, and then the last thing, there was, you may have been aware, there was a fire on Crest last Friday. Um, that's still under investigation, but it was believed to be arson. Other than that, that's all I have.
Was everybody okay?
Yeah, there was no injuries, right?
Okay.
But that, yeah, two people were arrested.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that, Andy. Does any council member have any questions for our assistant, uh, city manager? All right. Moving on to item number eight, which is other, other reports. Um, we're going to start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there are several items I was involved with since the last council meeting. One was, um, a direct transfer of one of our mayor's court cases to downtown. We tried the case on September twenty-one. Um, the individual was found guilty and appropriately fined. Also, I did prepare the massage parlor moratorium resolution that you'll consider tonight at thirty-seven, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I've wrote in a, a letter to Chief Arns regarding a recent Supreme Court, uh, I'm sorry, Court of Appeals case that was then sent to the Supreme Court regarding sovereign immunity and how it would apply to K-nine officers. But more importantly, the court's attitude towards sovereign immunity being given to police officers. The court seemed to be narrowing the application of sovereign immunity, um, despite the clear legislation that would apply. There were several foreclosure matters that, uh, I investigated for the city, uh, three recent filings. I responded to Chief Jones regarding a trespassing issue. Uh, when our property people are trying to, uh, enforce our ordinances, do they fear violating someone's no trespassing sign? The easiest answer is if they suspect a violation, if it's out in clear sight, clear vision, uh, they can proceed as long as they're within the course and scope of their duties. There's an issue regarding individuals who live in the city of Forest Park for the purposes of sending their children to school. I revised, uh, an agreement or a statement of fact that the city and the school district have been using and I sent that to, um, our finance director. I also, uh, I think I sent it to you, Andy, of the, secretary here in Ohio, our House Secretary of State, and a listing of certain retention schedules that are recommended, uh, as a guidance for our records retention. Uh, I looked at the Ohio Hera registration contract, uh, for Mr. Anderson. I also looked at a contract for the purchase of new cruiser video systems. Uh, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good. Thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions for our law director?
I don't have a, I don't have a question. I, I do need clarity though to better understand sovereign immunity. Can you just, the way I'm understanding, the government cannot be sued and that's exactly what it is?
That is the general rule. Um, it's employees and the government cannot be sued. And then the Ohio revise code gives specific numerator, numerated exemptions to that. The most, uh, commonly seen exemption is in a police officer's situation of, um, driving a vehicle or arresting a suspect. If it's determined the conduct was reckless, then sovereign immunity would not apply. But in general, if it's just ordinary negligence, sovereign immunity applies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our other report, uh, our clerk of council, Ms. DeKia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three and forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three were posted as required and that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Uh, moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. There's none. So, we'll move on to item number ten, which is new business and I need a, uh, motion to suspend. Vice Mayor Holt.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time ordinance numbers forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three and forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three by title only.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Only that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Holt, will the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Adams? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Clark? Yes. Harrison?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar equipment acquisition bond for the city of Forest Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and, uh, properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Um, excuse me. That this, uh, this ordinance was a negotiated, uh, five-year loan with, uh, Fifth Third Bank. It's for the purchase of a equipment hardware that was, uh, listed in our budget for this two thousand twenty-three year. Was a breakdown of the, um, of the equipment. We have, um, items for Public Works, radios for the purchase price of twenty-four thousand, mini excavator at purchase price of a hundred and eleven thousand, uh, wireless cameras for recreation, uh, for the park at ten thousand. Our information system, uh, for our hardware infrastructure replacement, hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Cameras for our police cars and printers replacement, twenty-four thousand, five hundred. And, um, there's a, uh, fire, two life packs and monitor distributor, distributor for forty thousand and a mobilized stair chair at twelve thousand. So, that's the breakdown that, uh, that deals with the cost and purchase of that equipment listed at thirty, three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And, uh, we have a loan rate with the Fifth Third Bank at five point nine on a year percent. So, uh, this, uh, uh, needed area of purchases, uh, for the advancement of the city and its continued growth to, uh, keep things in its perspective. My motion, ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three passes seven zero. Uh, moving on to the next one, will the clerk please read ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance amending ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand twenty-two in order to increase the number of commissioners for the Quality of Life Commission from seven to nine and declaring an emergency.
All right. I move that we adopt ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Um, this is really a, a ordinance to expand the size of one of our city commissions, the Quality, Quality of Life Commission. As you heard earlier, uh, Quality of Life meets on the, uh, the third Tu, Thursday?
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday. I was way off of the month. And the Quality of Life Commission actually just, uh, really addresses, like, just like the, the title implies, quality of life issues across the, the, uh, city of Forest Park. So, if there are things like you want to do cleanup days or if you would like to organize, um, community gardens, those, that's the type of commission that you would want to participate in. And this is just an ordinance that allows more people to join the commission. It's currently a seven-member body and we want to expand it to nine. Um, but that is not the only commission that is available. We also have beautification, parks and recreation, and we will be expanding, um, those as, um, as we see fit. But with that, I would urge adoption on this ordinance. Uh, so will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right. Ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three passes seven zero.
Forty-four.
Yeah, yeah, it was forty-four. Um, uh, moving on to resolution number thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-three, uh, will the clerk please read that in full?
Resolution number thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution declaring a moratorium on massage establishments and practitioners of any sort and other similar establishments for a hundred and eighty days. Whereas Appendix B of the zoning code classifies massage therapists, massage services, and massage locations under B dash forty-five as a personal service group, personal service group number seven twenty-nine miscellaneous personal service or major group number eight, health services, major group number eight oh four offices and other health practitioners, eight oh five nursing and personal care facilities and/or eight oh nine health and allied services. Whereas there is a widespread concern that establishments of this sort may be engaged in illicit or unlawful activities, including, including but not exclusively prostitution and human trafficking, all of which would be extremely detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Forest Park. Whereas it is in the interest of the citizens of Forest Park that no new application for offices or other locations or activities commonly known as massage services or massage parlors be accepted until such time as council has studied these establishments and established rules and regulations to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. And now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, a moratorium is hereby declared on the review of applications and issuance of new zoning certificates of compliance for massage locations or other similar establishments as determined by the zoning administrator. Section two, the moratorium would automatically expire one hundred and eighty days following the effective date of this resolution unless terminated or extended by resolution of council. Section three, applications that were properly filed or in process prior to the passage of this resolution may continue to be processed and zoning certificates of compliance to be issued, notwithstanding the moratorium. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
All right. Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Holt?
I would like to make a mo- I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, it was a while ago. This, as the, as we read in full, this is really just a, a moratorium so we can review our zoning code and policies as it relates to massage parlors. As Forest Park continues to expand and add new businesses, there have been some businesses that go into different areas that don't comply with the, the zoning code, and they have to come to our, the regulatory body, which would be the planning commission for what they will consider special exceptions or conditional uses. But we know that there is certain activity that is not in, in alignment with the health, safety, welfare, and morals of the city of Forest Park. So before we allow more massage parlors to come in, we want to review our code, make sure that it's up to date, make sure that it is, that everybody will be in compliance with that, that code. And that's why we actually had to have this moratorium. It'll just be six months. And at, at that point, it'll be over automatically, but our zoning code essentially will be in alignment with the most relevant laws to make sure that everyone is protected and make sure all the, the businesses are, are the type of business that they, they profess to be. And that's really what this is pertaining to. But with that, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three passes seven to zero. And will the clerk please read resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three in full as well?
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution supporting the submission of a Clean Ohio grant application for the acquisition of twenty-one point twelve acres of undeveloped land for open space preservation. Whereas the Oberor Development Company is the owner of twenty-one point twelve, I'm sorry, the owner of a twenty-one point twelve acre tract of forested land located northeast of the junction of Hamilton Avenue, US one twenty-seven, and Interstate two seventy-five. And whereas grant funding is available from the Clean Ohio Fund to assist local communities and nonprofit organizations with property acquisition for green space conservation. And whereas the owner has agreed to sell the property to the city at a, at a price below its appraised value. And whereas covenants placing permanent restrictions on the land will be executed and recorded with the property deed to conserve the land as open space and to prohibit future development of the property. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, the acquisition of twenty-one point twelve acres of undeveloped land as described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this resolution for green space conservation is hereby endorsed and supported by the city council. Section two, the city manager is authorized to submit on behalf of the city of Forest Park an application to the Natural Resources Assistant Council District Two and the Ohio Public Works Commission for Open Space Acquisition and if it were, if awarded, to implement said project. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion? First Vice Mayor Holt?
I move for adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
There's no further discussion since the motion, the resolution was read in full.
Thank you for that.
That I would urge passage or adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you for that. Ms. Bailey, will you please read the, call the role on the motion to adopt?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
All right, resolution number eighty, thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three passes seven to zero. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of Central Park for a cultural event on November fourth, including the use of fireworks by a licensed and insured contractor. It's been moved and properly seconded. This could be a voice vote, so all those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, can we have a discussion?
Yeah, we can have a discussion. Go ahead.
Well, can you tell us what organization is providing this cultural event?
I'll have to refer to Chief Jones on this one. Chief, if you wanna address counsel? Yeah. You wanna come up to the podium, Chief, please?
I do believe it's the Nepalese, southwest Ohio. It's a Diwali event.
I thought that we weren't permitted to use fire of any kind except for the, in Central Park.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I, I thought that we were, we weren't allowed to use fire in Central Park whatsoever. We couldn't even do lanterns.
I'm sorry, I still, I still can't hear you.
I apologize. I was not aware that we were allowed to use fire of any sort outside and, except for those grills over in Central Park. There are some other events this summer that couldn't do just, you know, the lanterns and things like that. So I'm, I just would like some...
Lanterns are illegal in the state of Ohio, but licensed fireworks, like Rozzy's, they're allowed to do fireworks. Citizens can use fireworks. There are different grades. Rozzy's use a one point three, consumers use a one point four, and that's how they're labeled. But the city of Forest Park, we have ordinance against the general public using fireworks.
But not licensed individuals.
Correct.
Oh, that's my question. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Is this a one-time event or annual event?
I, I think that they're looking at making it an annual event. It will happen November fourth from one to eight. And the fireworks will be occurring about eight o'clock of that evening, and it's a five-minute-long fireworks display.
So is my understanding that we had an ordinance against fireworks in the city of Forest Park?
Consumers, yes.
Okay. And so also, if we allow this organization to have a fireworks show, what justify us not saying no to another organization? That's my, a question that I have. And what policies do we have in place to support this fireworks show? Like, for example, do we require a certain amount of insurance they need to have to host fireworks in our community? And then my next question, you, I'm doing one question at a time, or?
Well, the insurance, yeah, we have the insurance. What was the first one?
So do we require a certain amount? Do we have a policy that says, hey, if you have fireworks in our community, you have to have this amount of fireworks? I mean...
It was state requirement, or...
Okay. Also, will the fire department be inspect, inspecting plans for this event?
Yes.
Okay. Also, how would the community be notified of fireworks? Because some members of, of communities can nega, can negatively, can negatively be affected by firework noises. For example, our residents who have PTSD, they may be triggered by fireworks. So how is this organization gonna notify all the members of our community that fireworks will be going off on November the fourth?
The organization could do the notification, but we can also probably do the notification through our e-news and our newsletters that we send out. That's something we can go back to the organization and have them also mail something out to a general facility. But I could pass that back to Jay Dennis.
And so I know in the past, other organizations have wanted to do fireworks. And, Councilmembers, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can recall. But the city of Forest Park, we don't do fireworks ourselves as a municipality. So that was my understanding, that that's why we had an ordinance in place to avoid fireworks?
Yes. The state of Ohio allows you to do fireworks, but Forest Park is, we, we retained our ordinance saying that it's for, for consumers. For citizens, for lighting fireworks, it's illegal in the city of Forest Park.
I think I have more logistics concerns about that. So I know that when we have Jazz Fest, I know that we have a cooperative agreement. I would, I, I guess we have a cooperative agreement with the school to where we are able to use their parking and things like that. We're able to use the funeral homes parking. How would they, the, the parking is very minute if you take away those two, two anchors. How do, how would they, how would they park? What, what is the plan for that?
Officer Wilson is doing that report, and he'll figure out what the needs are, and it'll be up to the Diwali, I mean, not the Diwali, but Nepalese group to work those, work those up.
Exactly, with those entities, those organizations?
For those parking, yes. This is their, this is not the city of Forest Park doing this.
Do they have a, do they have a local chapter, like a local organization here?
I think, I do believe they have something right here behind Kroger. In those office complex back here. Off of Camper Metal.
Are we specially invited?
What, does it mean?
I think it says open to the public, right?
At this point, it's open to the public.
Yes.
We are.
I, I personally think this issue should go to work session so we can discuss it a little more. I do have some concerns because we have turned away other res, other organizations. And, but like I said, I do, I do have some concerns that we don't have policies in place to support this event.
It's the same company was doing fireworks when we had, goodness gracious, the, you know, Central Life. We were having fireworks there every time after the orchestra was there.
Concert on the Greens?
Concert on the Green, correct.
Do they have to pay a, a fee to?
A permit with the city of Forest Park, yes. And they're licensed through the state of Ohio to be quote called shooters.
What is that amount?
What's that?
What is that amount?
I have no pressure on it.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, when this was presented to the city?
And they came to talk to us?
Yeah, I mean, based on the, the emotion, that's, that's noted.
Tuesday, or Monday or Tuesday last week. Last week, yeah. Because they want to do it on October the fourteenth.
I would have to co-sign with, about to say commissioner, I'm so sorry. Councilwoman Moore, I think this is something that we should take to work session and have a more elaborate conversation about it. I love the idea of there being a cultural event, and there are sincere efforts to embrace our city as we are extremely diverse, beautifully diverse. But I do think that this is a discussion that we need to take to work session. And then once we do that, be able to flush it out collectively and then come to a conclusion.
So, couple things, really quick. If the event is on October fourteenth, even if we discuss it at work session, there won't be anything for us to vote on necessarily. If we don't want fireworks, someone can make a motion to amend this motion, or you can actually just vote against it right now. But in, in addition to that, a really quick chief, at, at any point in time, you can just say no. I mean, this is, it's a voice vote. We can, we can do a roll call.
I have a question.
Chief, really quick.
Before we go, the date's November fourth. They initially wanted October fourteenth.
Okay.
Yes, so it's no longer October fourteenth.
Well, I mean, be that as it may, if, if people are, are against the fact that they're having fireworks, I think this is the first time that the Nepalese and Bhutanese community has ever asked us for anything. We can always amend this motion to exclude the fireworks. If it's that much of a sticking point, I, I just, I, I think that there are more pressing matters that we can, we can get to in time. But if people wanna wait till a work session to discuss it more, we can. But I think the fire, you know, Fire Chief actually already looked at the, the plans and kind of reviewed it in detail. I would assume.
We have no objections to it.
And the, and the Fire Chief has no objections to fireworks, so Vice Mayor Moore?
I just think...
I mean, Vice Mayor Holt?
Okay, I just have, I just have a question. Didn't for years across the street, there were fireworks done for the Fourth of July? Every year?
Yes.
Across the street, where?
At the insurance company. There are never any complaints about that. They had them.
Them all to you.
Every year.
And, and my neighbors, every year, Labor Day, everything else.
My neighbors too. I mean, you know.
But I guess in that situation, it was planned. It was, there were processes in place. And so they came to us on Tuesday, last Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's a little concerning to me because when you're planning an event like that, you should have some time, some timelines. And so I, I, I think it's, it's kind of rushed. And, but I, I think that we don't have policy, I don't believe we have policies in place. And I feel that as a council and as a city, we need to get these policies in place. So if other residents come, we'll have things in place to say, okay, this is why we're saying no. This is why we may say yes. And so I, I just feel that we, I've, I've been on council...
Seven years?
And so I don't recall any policies regarding fireworks.
And you probably won't see policies because we're not the experts. We're not the people who actually use the devices. And these will not be the same device that you see on the Fourth of July or, or September Labor Day parties. These are smaller shells. These are three-inch shells. These are not the eight, tens, and twelve-inch shells. These are very small in nature. These are the ones that the consumers can use, but not in the city of Forest Park. And you guys probably witnessed these type of mortars being launched in your community. They're little, like, like a baseball, a three-inch shell. And they're not gonna go that high. And also probably have some cakes. It'll be like a showering event of, of, of star, you know, sparkles and such.
Right. Thank you for that, Chief. At this point, I don't wanna keep going on in discussion. Point of order, Law Director, would I need to rescind the motion? And then would we need to also make a motion to amend the agenda to table it for another, another time?
Yes, if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay, so I will rescind the motion to do a voice vote to settle it now. And then I need a motion to amend the agenda to table this discussion for the next work session.
I move that we table this discussion to our next work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
The only, the only request I have is that Officer Wilson could present the information concerning the parking along with that.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the role on the, on the motion to amend the agenda and table this discussion?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
No.
All right, motion passes six to one. So with that, that will conclude all of our new business. This motion will be discussed at our next work session, and then we'll have to bring it back up. And with that, is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, this council meeting is adjourned.